It is seven o'clock, so I'm going to call to order the September ninth, two thousand and twenty four meeting of Beacon City School District Board of Education. Please stand for the pledge.
I'd like to wish this by the United States of America, to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vicki, can you call the roll?
Ms. Olson?
Here.
Ms. Flynn?
Excused.
Mr. Levine?
Here.
Ms. McNair?
Here.
Ms. Kush?
Excused.
Mr. Shutter?
Here.
Mr. White?
Excused.
Ms. Heaver?
Here.
Ms. Sadler?
Here. Matt, can you point out the fire exits?
Yeah, exits are in the back of the L G I.
All right, there's nobody here to make a public comment, so we can move on to the workshop.
Good evening, everyone, just so you don't have to listen to me twice tonight, I am just going to do a few update items before I start. One is we finished our fourth day of school today, pre K had their first day today, which was great. And one of the really cool things being in the buildings is, you know, the hard work of the capital project, even though it's not completely done. Seeing students react to it has been really priceless. And so especially at Rambout, a lot of student, a lot of positive student feedback about the new art rooms. Like, I was almost kind of shocked by how much I was getting, just in terms of like, how the kids felt about it, this new science labs. How bright the hallways are around about like, so that's probably where I've heard the most. When we get the playground equipment in the Forest Hill in South, I'm sure I'll hear a lot from those kids. But it's, it's really been cool at roundabout the last few days to hear the number of kids who noticed and really see the difference. And, and also the staff who've really seen it. So just a couple of updates on the capital project. The track is not complete, but it, we're aiming to be, to have it completed on September twenty first. That is somewhat weather dependent, but we've had a really good run of good weather. So I think that should still be the day. The playground equipment at Forest Hill in South, we're working through some things with the contractor and vendor. But, you know, when I can give an update on that, I will, but our hope is to get that done pretty quickly as well. And then there also has been a lot of, you know, still for several weeks, there's going to be a lot of night work and weekend work finishing, finishing a lot of the stuff. You know, across all of our buildings. So also just, you know, we did two pretty big renovations of parking lots, which I know are not as exciting as an art room and those kinds of things. But, you know, there's been some learning of new routines. But that said, like that, that flow has been really nice at both Glenham and Forest Hill, too. So that's something we're going to kind of monitor, but it's nice to have that newly done as well. So just a couple of other updates. We found out about this news today, Beacon High School was named a two thousand and twenty four sportsmanship promotion award winner. That's like a state award that Beacon High School won by, by the N S W organization. So we had it on our social media today. But the focus of that award we were given is what a good job our school staff and our school community does in hosting games. So that is noticed. You know, we put a lot of energy into and time into kind of planning it and making it safe and inviting for people. So, so we're proud to pick up that award today. And then I'll talk a little bit about this in the presentation, but right now, the next couple of months, we're in a phase from the state of, you know, the Blue Ribbon Commission on graduation. Before it gets finalized and accepted by the state, they're doing like one last round of, of public forums about it. And there's going to be two up at Duchess Bowses, but we're going to be able to host one because we didn't sidetrack with someone who's on the Blue Ribbon Commission, Saggy. So Saggy and Kim Fontana, who is the superintendent of polling, but she was on the commission as well. On October sixteenth here at Beacon High School, we're going to host it. So that's, it's not like a beacon specific thing, it's a state driven, they have a script that they're going to do and be able to answer questions. And there's like a feedback gathering tool that they'll use at the event. But it's nice for us to host when this neck, this part of the county doesn't always get this kind of stuff. So we're happy to have that for, it's open to anyone, beacon folks and beyond.
Do you know what time it's going to be?
What's that?
Do you know what time it's going to be?
Do we know what time?
Six. Great. I can't go that way. There's two. After eight and one, which went at four thirty is six, and then the sister at fifty.
So do we, is one or the other, there's one or the other?
We'll do promotional stuff with it, both social media and our website, we'll send something out. But, and we will, you know, it's, it's really great that we get to host it, or we get to host one of these events here in Beacon. We will put in there, this is not a beacon specific event, it's, it's really about gathering input for the state, for the state's efforts. So, all right. So tonight I am going to, I'm just going to kind of briefly do an overview of mission, vision, values, and talk about board goals a little bit. Not in a conclusive way, but in a, this is what we're going to do over the next few months to try to paint the picture and talk about a process for like board affirmation or adoption or revision of, especially the board goals. Okay, so this right here, we developed this two years ago with our strategic planning team. I think the mission, vision and values, values slash beliefs are a great foundation for the work that we do. It was a great process in developing this. We're going to do more with making sure this is visible in schools and on the website. That said, the, the outside partners we were working with, with the strategic planning, we're not working with this year. We had to make, you know, a lot of different sort of belt tightening decisions with the budget. So part of what we're going to be talking about tonight is how we're going to move the work forward with just staff and stakeholders. And then I want to just kind of quickly go through the board goals, these board goals, I think I, oh, I have a mistake in one of the slides, I'm sorry. I may need to. I shouldn't have caught that. We have, the board has six goals. And I will read two of them. All right. So before we get to the ones that are on the slides, and I'll fix this and we can re-put it back up, the board has an excellent school. The B C S D will provide an exemplary curriculum and supportive culture to ensure all students maximize their potential and are prepared for any endeavor beyond graduation. That is not on the slides, I apologize, I repeated a slide instead of, okay. And the board has an equity goal, B C S D will celebrate diversity and provide an equitable education for all students. They're working to eliminate race, ethnicity, class, gender identity, sexuality and disabilities predictors of student success. Those should have been on the slide. And then the other, the other four that we have are sustainability goal, we'll use best practices to create a healthy school climate, improve educational programming, conserve limited financial and physical resources, culture of care. B C S D will foster a culture of care dedicated to main safe and supportive emotional environment that supports the wellness of all members of the community. And then the last two fiscal, have a transparent budget process, build public support to maximize district programs and offerings, and then communication. Will the trust in community through open responsive communication outreach and dialogue with stakeholders. So you can see with the board goals, there's a lot of sort of crossover with, I'll go back with this. And so we, I wanted to create something that sort of merges these two this year, so it's not, it doesn't feel like the board has separate goals from the district or anything like that. I think that probably would make sense to most folks. I think the most important thing with this, and I'll come back to the board goals, is the work that we're doing. So I wanted to just briefly talk about new initiatives that we have. So none of these are, I mean, they're continuing things, but all of these are new efforts this year. There's many, many things that we are continuing from years past, but I just want to take a snapshot of some of the new work that we're doing this year. So we have the new reading program, the H M H reading program that we're starting in grades three, four and five, we're now piloting it, that's all the classrooms in those grades. We had a number of teachers working over the summer organizing it and aligning it. And then the first day of staff was back, teachers were getting acclimated to and ready to teach it. Positivity project is expanding this year, it was at Sergeant last year, it's going to be across all four elementary schools. It is a, it is like a ten minute a day curriculum that really provides like nice teaching tools and it fits in really beautifully with responsive classroom. Responsive classroom is a way of like organizing your classroom and building community. The positivity project allows for like a curriculum and vocabulary and life lessons to become a part of like that structure. We're also doing a study of it for the middle school. So the middle school would take a little bit longer to adopt it because they have subject specific teachers at the middle school, it's not just a homeroom teacher fitting it in. But Spack and Kill Middle School is a middle school that does it, we're going to study how they do it and look to incorporate positivity project work at the middle school. This year, last year, the sixth grade, sixth graders had second step lessons, which is, which is a social emotional curriculum as well. That's continuing this year, but we're looking to see if we have all of our elementary schools doing it, we're looking to see how we can continue it at the middle school as well. So maybe some tweaks to the schedule, which could be possible this year, for sure could be possible next year. But we're excited that it's going to be across the board at the elementary level. These are new classes at Beacon High School this year. Excited about all of those, come from both a combination of teacher and student interest. Another big effort for us this year, it's, we're super excited about it. It's really, I haven't been in a situation where we're not fully done with the one we're in, you know, because we still have some work to do next summer. But we're going to start planning for the big one that the public just voted on this past year. And so there's going to be a lot of planning for that, that's going to happen this year. We're planning for that work, for that capital project to be twenty twenty six, twenty seven and twenty eight. That means for state approval that the planning needs to happen now. Heather and her team have been leading professional development on inclusive teaching and learning, they've been really focused in at Rambout. Especially all the administrators and the sixth grade teachers have been part of professional development that started a little bit at last year, but is carrying over into this year. Another initiative for this year, and I say it's new simply because I feel like we have a new landscape from Albany. And so we really want to go after long range financial planning in a even more transparent way. And a more year round way. And I'll talk about that a little bit more when we get to the board calendar. And then lastly, we have some new or slash improved metrics that we want to be looking at, both as an internal team, but also with the board. We're going to be surveying stakeholders, meaning staff and parents, and, and we're going to do it slightly differently for students, but on long term planning for the district, kind of like hopes and dreams of what we want to accomplish. We did one two and a half years ago, and we want to, as we kind of try to reignite the strategic planning effort, we'd love for the board and us to have this data by November. So we want to do this in October to help us with our budget planning. We are either looking at, it's kind of an and or thing, a mental health screener and or a climate survey for our students that we want to implement this year.
What's a, what is a mental health screener?
Who want, which, who wants to speak to it?
In, in, I, one of the things that I wanted to do was reach out to, we did a lot of work around R T I, F T S S. So we started at the elementary levels with now to going into the middle school. So I reached out to Donna Suma because one of the things we wanted to look at more closely was the F T S S and looking at implementing a new mental, is that like a screener for social emotional learning? But something that all students, again, not for this year, this year we want to target first the kids who are being brought up for R T I and see kind of how that works based like there. And then possibly implement the next year for all students. So Dawn is going to be helping me select one that, so it has things like questions that the kids would, would answer, for example. So what particular screener did I look at and say, I argue a lot with people and the student would answer accordingly. Or I feel good, for example, I have friends, I have, so it's all these different things to determine if the student's at risk or not. And then hopefully then correctly within support of those students.
And it, so it's something, it's like a computer, something they answer, it's not an in person interview?
People we don't know yet, so Donna Suma is going to be facilitating a lot of that work, helping me with that work.
I, so I'm a little confused, so would it happen in a classroom setting with everybody taking this or how, how does it?
Ideally, it would be that all the students would take it, how that's done, we would have to work that out, figure it out. It's almost kind of how we do our academic assessments, we do it three times a year.
Right.
So it would be doing the same thing, but for social emotional learning.
And?
There's some curriculums that have that already embedded where everyone takes it.
Okay.
So, but we don't have that at the middle school.
Right.
A curriculum, but it's something that we need to start doing because arts guys are supposed to be qualified.
And so. So let's just say two hundred and twenty students take, take the assess, whatever the number is. What, so you, do you get like results, like, like I'm just trying to figure out, what do you do with the results that come back from the assessment? Does, do students get like, like targeted or do they get like grouped into certain areas? I'm just trying to.
The goal is if any student is identified, that means they're in support, they will get that extra support.
Okay.
We wouldn't use them for targeted.
I know. I knew when I said it.
No, I, I'm just, I'm just messing with you.
I knew it. Yeah, scratch that. Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I know this is not at all the same thing, but as many of you know, we have a tool that monitors what is, how our Chromebooks are used and how the network is used. So again, I'm not saying these are the same thing, but like, you know, students will type things into that are concerning. And so that immediately initiates a response by school staff and it's always talking to the parent, but then it's also like connecting with a student. Because sometimes it's a student that's not on our radar, so to speak. And so it could initiate a student developing a plan or relationship with like a school social worker that wasn't there in the past. This is like another way, obviously it's more comprehensive than like what kids randomly type into their Chromebook. But, but it's like a tool to sort of go beyond what we're seeing, you know, because I think it's also, we're all, we all have our biases. And it's, it's like we have this sense of who's doing well and who's not. And so it's another way, another safety net. The, the climate survey part is more a sort of, would give us like data in terms of like more macro data for the school. Like, you know, like this percentage of students feel this way, this percentage of students connect, have a connection with another staff member, this percentage of students have connections with peers. Like this percentage of students know where to go to for help, like those kinds of things. So a climate survey gives you more sort of broader data. We don't want to like over survey students, but we want the information, so we're trying to figure out ways to do it. The last metric is something that has kind of fell off a little bit the last couple of years, but we have a new equity report card, it's finished. And we're going to be unveiling it probably at one of the next few board meetings. So we, we have an outside help who helps us with that, Liza Lucky. And so she created a new one for us, and it, so it looks at all of our data, student enrollment data, what classes kids are in, student discipline data. It looks at every piece in the district through an equity lens. So we're going to be prominently putting that back on the website and talking about that with the board as well. So I, I think, you know, there was a few pieces of feedback that we got over the last couple of years. And, and that's sort of driving this, and I know it's very much like a piece of clay right now that needs to get molded into something more. But the strategic planning initiatives that came out of that work two years ago, I think was super positive and created a lot of positive energy in the district around certain things. But we had all this other work happening in the district that was somehow outside of it, like all the work we've been. of it, like all the work we've been, we've spent so much investing in reading. The PPS department has done so many improvements in the district, like, and those were somehow outside of the strategic planning work. And that just felt wrong to me, like it didn't make sense. So as we've kind of reimagined this, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, but we're trying to capture the work that we're doing and we want to have it in the, I'll talk about a timeline, a rough timeline in a minute, but we want to have kind of a reestablished web presence around this, that both states the things we're doing, like things that are here, with like really clear areas where people can click on for more information about like what are we doing in reading? What's our plan with reading? Here's all the things we're doing. We, we started doing that with the budget process last year. We had a more involved budget website than we've ever had in the past. I think it was getting a lot more clicks than we normally do, so we want to do that with reading and instruction, with the work of our PPS department, the work of our budget and facilities department. We want to kind of integrate all this work together, so the strategic planning is not this like separate thing. So that all said, this is in very small type, but I wanted to just kind of talk about a little bit of a plan for the board meetings. This obviously can change based on your feedback and we're happy to make changes, but I wanted to sort of lay out the information you're going to be getting, like the times that you can really kind of grapple with stuff and then talk about when it makes, makes sense to kind of talk about the board goals again. So what I'm envisioning is at the next board meeting, that would be where we really get into like the instructional part of the strategic plan, right? Like what are we doing with reading? What are we doing with math? What are we doing with curriculum work? Looking at the data. Excuse me, that, that's kind of the basis of the decisions we're making. Next, the next meeting would be PPS department sharing their part of the plan. What are we doing with our work with identifying students? What are we doing with our work with being a more inclusive district? What are we doing with professional development? What are we doing with mental health? And then October 28th, this is the part that was never a part of the strategic planning, which I think is crucial, is the finance, long-range financial part. So we typically have not had really in-depth financial conversations at a board meeting prior to January. You know, our thinking has always been, well, that's when we developed the budget, that's when we're waiting to hear from the state. We really want to come out strong with thinking about our finances in the fall, thinking about what we're predicting from the state, at least foreshadowing potential hard decisions we may need to make, or also making, you know, making some, starting to make some thoughts as a board about which directions we want to go to. Around that time, we will be getting some of that stakeholder survey back. And I think, my hope is October 28th, we get a really solid sense of like what we're thinking long-range financially. We have that survey data and we start to sift through as a board, as a team, doing it very public way, like what, what kinds of things do we want to do with our resources? So I'm excited about that. Like I feel like those three drivers, obviously Emery's not here tonight, but the drivers of this are my executive team. But, you know, our principals are really involved, our teachers are really involved in this work. We want you to be really involved in this work and we're going to create some feedback loops with the public as well, once we get this going. But we really want to capture with the public in a really clear and transparent way the work we're doing and not, and not sort of separating things and saying this is strategic planning and, but yet our work on reading and math is over here. That doesn't make sense anymore for us. So we want to try to incorporate all that. In November, December, and January, we have school presentations. So those are when our school principals come and they talk about all of the things that, you know, we've been talking about from the departmental level, but they'll give it their school. They'll, they'll put their, you know, their school's print on it. They'll also talk about their school data at those. And then when we're kind of finishing up the school presentations is when we're going to really jump in to the budget part. Now, we're happy to shift any of this, but I really, I feel like in the past, we've sort of been waiting for some of this information, like, and it's in the spring when we're doing it, and I feel like it's just not the right time anymore. Like we're really, it's starting to become more predictable, I think, what is coming from Albany in terms of finances. And I really want to start gearing all this work, that we're really being clear about it, at least in terms of, I don't know the right way to say it, like boundaries, borders, banks on the river, whatever metaphor you want to use. I think we can start laying some of those things out in the fall. So, so some data points here. I talked about a stakeholder survey that's going to go out mid-October. We'll start having that data pretty quickly by the end of October. We're going to have data pieces from the student side of this at different parts of the year. We'll also obviously have our student achievement data, our student learning data that we'll be looking at as well. We want data to be a part of this. So I'm just trying to think of, so, so after, after some of our other departments present their budgets in January and February, PPS instruction, an instruction will come back in March to kind of share like an update on their strategic planning work, but also this is what they're thinking for their budget for the upcoming year. So there's nothing radical here. What I wanted to also throw out though, is what I'd love to do is we, these next three board meetings, we really get into it with what we're doing as a district. And then after that, after those three meetings is when we go back to the board goals and you all talk about like, do you want to revise them? Do you want to shift them at all? Like I think to just sort of do like a, let's vote on them today without talking about the things that we're working as a district doesn't make a lot of sense. I'd love that to be more integrated. So what I was envisioning is, is that you're looking at your board goals again in October and November after we've done these presentations? And that we, based on all this information we're pulling together on the work we're doing, that we're kind of relaunching the strategic planning website by at least January, hopefully a little bit earlier than that. And that we utilize the website. And I know we're transitioning to a new website, but this will move easily what we come up with, that we use as a means of updating the community. At least it's like a warehouse for the work that we're doing. So I know a lot of this is very like, it's just, it's just words I'm putting at you right now. But to go back to this list, there's a lot of energy in the district. We're tackling some big things this year. This doesn't even capture everything, but these are some of the main things that we're working on. And we really want to incorporate this into both the strategic planning and the board goals. I think ultimately, I don't want to say it doesn't matter, but what matters is like, you know, what we see in our students and our families, right? So it's kind of like how I started with the capital project. So many meetings and so many designs drawn and all of that stuff. And then you see the users, the middle school students, for instance, like talking about the hallways are like really bright and the art rooms are amazing and, right? You could see the users start to appreciate it. That's what really matters. So with all these things, right? It's, it's, we're seeing shifts with our reading data. With the Positivity Project expansion, we're seeing shifts with like climate data or student discipline data. With these new classes being offered, we're seeing more engagement at the high school or even more engagement, I should say, with the PD around inclusive teaching and learning, right? We're seeing some shifts with what our IEPs look like, et cetera. I mean, you know, I can go on and on. So that's the important part of this. But we wanted to talk about some of the things that we were doing and maybe not like put the brakes on board goal discussion, but like put it off a few board meetings until we could really share in-depth what we're doing, if that makes sense. And then I really, my last point is just I really see the website as being key to this. Last year, as I said, we really beefed up the budget part of the website more so than we had in the past. We, we don't obsessively track clicks, but it was getting a lot more clicks and views than typical. People were accessing it more. It was like a great place to go for information. We want that to be the same for facilities and the capital project. We want it to be the same for our reading program, want it to be the same for our PPS department, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, right? It's not all the stuff that goes on to social media. It's also like the, the planning and what resources we're using and all those kinds of things. So that's my brief speech about all of this. And I guess the reactions I'm looking for is, is this proposed timeline okay? To like go through these next few board meetings and then kind of come back to the board goals? Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me. Will you repeat, I'm sorry, but repeat, did you want to come back to the board goals after the school presentations?
No, just the, just the instructional one, the PPS one and the facilities financial one.
Okay, good, okay.
And it could just be, the conversation could be, we, you know, I'm not telling you what to say, but we love the board goals, we just need plans and metrics attached to them or whatever, which I, my hope is over the next three meetings that will become clear.
Right.
Or clearer, I should say. I don't want to wait till the school ones. I think the school presentations will really flesh out to you what this all looks like, you know? At the school and classroom level.
Sure. Okay, yeah, that makes sense to me.
Did, we talked, when we did the strategic plan, we talked about a dashboard. Do you, do you feel like, because I think that could be an interesting way to like integrate all these different things? I don't know. I mean, I, I totally hear what you're saying, that it's, it's so amazing for people who are in the schools to see this stuff happening. And, but it, but I think our challenge is for people who, you know, parents who aren't in the schools regularly or, you know, anyone who's just.
They're, they're not going to spend a half an hour clicking around to like read the reading plan or something like that, right?
Right, or is there a way, and I'm not a website designer, but, you know, to just sort of, yeah, there feels, I.
I think there's a, I think there's a simple way to do it. I, I, we don't want to like purchase a product to do it. We just want to do it ourselves. I think there's some simple ways to do it. It may not be like the most beautiful-looking thing in the world, but like I think there's some simple ways to do just like updates. It could even be this stuff, right? Like capital projects, we had a meeting on October 15th. We established some basic goals for the next capital project. Like if you want the notes for the meeting, you know what I mean? Like, it's like you can see that it happened. Do you want to dive deeper? Here's a way to dive deeper, right? That's my vision for this. Like we're, we have regular meetings with our web person. They're able to spend a little bit more time with Beacon this year, which is great. So we want to really kind of beef that part up.
Yeah. I do feel like the budget page is a good jumping off point to, you know, to repeat because it has that exact, the snapshot and then go deeper, which I think would be great. And to integrate the goals and strategic plan, they, that was always part of the conversation, them being, you know, sort of one and the same, but.
Well, one other thing I forgot to put on a slide, and maybe it's not something that would go on a slide, but whatever I can do to help with, we had a board retreat last year that was around long-range financial planning and I think it was really useful. And somewhere in this timeline, it would be great to do that one again. I mean, we may be able to have multiple retreats this year, but like it, it's, I think somewhere before we've really gotten deep into the budget planning to also have a retreat focused on it too. Like I think a lot of the conversations can happen in here, in public, but I think a retreat also helps in terms of, you know, mapping out some of the issues we're facing.
Yeah, I thought, I'm sorry. I thought the timeline last year for the retreat was really good. It was right in the middle to end of January. Yeah, I was just going to mention that when you said that. So I think that's, to me, I thought that was a really good time because then we get all of that stuff at the top and then the presentations are kind of done and then we start to dive into it. I thought, you know, it's, and then it's, you know, at a retreat level, you know, it can just be a little more, you know, more thoughts can be said and, you know, and, and I just, I think that's a good timing. And I'm not saying to bring Amanda back, we don't have to, but, you know, I thought she was great. She was excellent.
We were talking about having her come back and I, I missed it, so it would be really helpful.
She's excellent.
But just to get clarity, do you, you feel like January, like late January would be too late in the context of the budget plan?
No, I think January would be good though.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we were talking about if, and we can talk about this with the larger board too, but we were talking about having a retreat maybe in October and a sort of like a how to be an effective board member type retreat. We may have somebody from NISBA sort of help moderate it and just, you know, onboard new members, but also as a good refresher for everybody on, you know, what our roles are and how we work together. And then have another one in January specifically dedicated to being stewards of the budget and like understanding a, a school district budget and having Amanda, who I hear is amazing, run it again would be super helpful.
She would love to come back. And she, you know, she, in that work plan we have with her from last year, she did some help with us developing the budget after the retreat. We want her to help us a little bit with that October 28th meeting from afar.
Okay.
Because, you know, I, well, I have facilities there too, like, but it's, it's really, I'm just sort of repeating myself here, but getting really into the financial part, at least like the, the broad strokes or, you know, by in the fall, I think is really crucial. And I haven't been doing that with you all. And so I see that as being really important. The retreat being in January though, I think is perfect timing too.
Okay.
Because you'll have, you'll have as a board, a ton of information, right? You'll have all these presentations, you'll have some stakeholder data, you know, about like what the public is thinking for the future of the district, like, and then obviously we have reality too. So, so just, just so to be clear about board retreats, so a board retreat about like the functioning of a board can be held like in an exec session style, right?
Okay.
So then a board retreat about the long-range planning could implicate, it's also, it's both about how a board operates, but it also can impact personnel decisions. So these are reasons why those would be a closed retreat, just for the public's sake.
Sure.
All, I mean, all of these conversations are going to be in public.
Sure.
You know, with, with, open to anybody to watch or ask questions later or whatever. So occasionally a board does a retreat based on either board functioning or if it involves both board functioning and like personnel type issues. So those would be reasons that why we would do it that way.
Yeah. I'll send out an email to get, start getting availability for those two.
Great.
We'll go from there.
I think from my perspective, the NISBA one and the long-range financial one were the two best retreats we've had in my time here too. Like, so I'm glad we're revisiting both of those. So, you know, a lot of this rests on us revamping our website, like really making things public. I feel good about the effort we made with the budget last year, so that's a start. I think we could do it with all the other departments. And we want things to kind of make sense to both us internally and also to the public and be something that we can mold and shape as we go.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any additional questions?
I just had one. I wanted to ask Heather, that PD at Rombout that you're doing on the inclusive classroom? So is that for teachers that sign up on their own or is it like a building? Like, is it done like at a faculty meeting, PD day, so that everybody gets to see it or just trying to get a sense of how it's getting out there?
So it's throughout the whole year.
Okay.
All the administrators in the district, their first two or three hours is this Thursday. But on Wednesday, they're coming in and their coaches that come in and spend specifically with the sixth-grade team. So they go into every sixth-grade classroom for the first day, build relationships with the teachers. And then it's through the entire year once a month. Some of it's virtual coaching, some's in-person coaching.
Great.
But it's not optional.
It's not optional.
Great.
Not optional. And it includes the special areas as well.
Oh, wow. Okay, that's, that's great, wonderful.
That's great.
So we're, you know, it's, it's a, it could be a challenge, but we're trying to find ways to do PD like during the day without taking too much away from the classroom because you can do the, you know, non-optional version of it that way too.
All right, great.
I have one note about what's on consent agenda, just so I don't forget. On the agreement with the architect, there was a scope of the work and we caught this after it went on board docs. And so I just want to verbally state it. It says, part of the scope is to work on the baseball field. It should say work on baseball and softball field in terms of like dealing with the drainage issues and putting in infield turf. We wanted to be clear about that. So we'll change that. So we'll change that document after the fact, but I just wanted to take a minute to say that is what you would be approving, it just got accidentally left off.
Okay.
We for sure want to be equitable there.
All right. So reviewing the agenda, there are a couple of changes. 15.02, the memorandum of agreement with the Beacon Teachers Association has been added. And for 1503, the resolution language was updated, and now it says, "Final approval from the school district attorneys," which.
It actually changed, it's now "upon recommendation of the district attorney."
Upon recommendation of the district attorney, so it has changed, okay. All right. And that's, but that's it, right? Those are the only two? Okay, great. Okay, so the board will adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual. The board will return in about 30 minutes, is that sound right? Okay. Motion to adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, we are adjourning for 30.
I shared my stuff.
Oh, gosh, my brain, my brain.
No, no, no.
Okay, so we are going to move on to Board of Education comments and committee reports. Sandra, we'll start with you.
I think it's a great, I was just thinking about how what a great idea it is to put those deeper layers on the website, particularly about the curriculum and reading. I thought that would be really helpful to people, especially if science of reading, it's been such a buzzy area of concern for people and changes that may be coming down from the governor. So I think that's, that's great that that level of transparency is coming. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Chris?
Just to congratulate everyone on the first day of school, especially teachers who got in there, right, as soon as they were allowed to, to prep the classrooms and space. But no other comment. Thank you.
Great. Levon?
No comment.
Eric?
No comment.
All right. Meredith?
I just wanted to let everybody know that before this board meeting, we had our first PR and legislative advocacy meeting, also known as PRAAL. And we set goals for the year, including the redo of our website, which I'm really excited about, but fits right into all of that work, and really focused on budget issues and foundation aid as they come. But also, we are doing a demographic study, which I think will be really helpful in understanding what we might be looking at in the next five to 10 years in Beacon. I see so many kids at the farmer's market. I feel like there's got to be a population explosion at some point.
(laughing)
I think that's it. And I was gonna try to schedule a policy meeting, but since Alina's not here, I will do it over text. But we'll do it, hopefully by the end of October, we can have our first policy meeting. And I just want, I hope you'll be talking about it, but I wanted to thank you for your work in organizing the foundation aid.
Oh, thanks.
What did we call it?
Forum.
Forum.
Yes.
It was, there were, how many superintendents?
Ten.
Ten superintendents. And it was so interesting to hear them each frame their issues around foundation aid. You know, there's a lot of crossover, but then like some very interesting nuances to it, too. So thanks so much for organizing that.
Thank you guys for being there. So, yeah, I did want to say it's exciting to be back. I have two middle schoolers now, and there was lots of talk about the art classroom. So yeah, the capital project is, is doing its job. A little housekeeping. So I will reach out to you guys about the board retreats. In terms of committees, are, is there a plan for the audit committee to meet?
I, it's, Kristin and, oh.
Sorry, go ahead.
(laughing)
I was thinking about something, and then we, so we have facilities on October 15th before the board meeting.
Right.
We need to have audit right around that time. So the, the auditors are working on their audit report that they just finished doing the in-district part a week ago. And so they need some time to do it. So somewhere in that timeframe. So I could start with Kristin.
Yep.
It would, with facilities being before a board meeting, it'd have to be on a non-board meeting night.
Yes.
Because we, we shouldn't wait till October 28th, which I think is the second meeting in October.
Okay.
We need to have it before then. So somewhere around the middle of October. So I'll start with Kristin.
Okay.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to mention that the curriculum committee is meeting September 25th, starting at 2:45 PM. So I'm looking forward to that. I wanted to ask about student reps. Like, when in the year will we, do we get them? Does it, is it a couple months in, or I feel like I forget?
No, we, I, I wanted the first few days to kind of settle in. So we send an email to all the juniors and seniors, and we look for essentially people who apply. And we do an interview, but it's typically more of an onboarding kind of thing.
Sure.
Sarah, I did see Sarah at the I Am Beacon block party, and she's interested in doing it again. So she's already put in, and then we'll, we'll put out for others. And so I think I'm looking at possibly September 30th, but maybe more likely October 15th they would begin.
Okay, great. I'm looking forward to squeezing more people in around this table. (coughing)
Well, we add the, we add the little side.
I know, I know.
And, you know, there is a law that was passed about, it was just recently signed into law by the governor. I don't know all the details, but it's about requiring student board members.
Second to change what we call them. Because we, there was a whole thing about how...
I need to read the details of the law. I mean, one of the reasons I like our version of it is you can have multiple kids. And I'm a big fan of like, they should do it with a group, and they could kind of talk with each other and feel supported.
Yes.
And the, I think the way at least, well, I shouldn't speak to, I don't know it in depth, but I, I worry that it's about having one board member.
Yeah.
Let's look into it.
I don't know, I just thinking about young people, it's like having a group that they do it with, I think is important. So maybe we can still keep doing it our way, but I'll think about that for next year. But they should be coming soon.
Okay, great. So lastly, I did, I wanted to thank you, Matt, and Meredith, and also Anthony and Anne Marie for attending the foundation aid forum hosted by a member, Jacobson. It was, it was really interesting. And sometimes what I heard was so shocking to me about how districts, especially smaller districts, the things that they have to do or can't do because of, because of state aid, or because of, you know, where their budgets are going. But I think the thing, the biggest takeaway is that having you guys there and, and talking to these legislators, I think it accomplishes, I mean, so the goal ultimately was to get that information to the Rockefeller Institute for their study on foundation aid. But functionally, what you were, you were also doing was explaining to these legislators who may not know that as, in as detailed a way about how budgets impact you. You were explaining to them what actually happens when there are fluctuations in state aid. What actually happens when you're trying to plan your budget? And then something happens really far away in Albany that has these huge ripple effects for what you're doing and, and for what you're, what you're giving students. So I really appreciate you being there to provide testimony for Rockefeller Institute, but also to educate legislators, which I think is a really important part of the advocacy process. And I feel like we have a fight ahead of us with, with the governor, and I'm looking forward to the advocacy and educational work that we do this year to make sure everybody understands what the stakes are.
Yeah, I, it was a really great night, and I learned a lot from my superintendent colleagues. And I think every district, or almost every district there, was a district that received no increase from the state and are worried about Save Harmless being taken away. So I think from that group, and including us, I think one of the biggest advocacy areas is about Save Harmless and districts should not be facing reductions. You know, there's a lot of complexity beyond that, but to me, that's sort of the starting point.
Yeah.
Of these conversations. So, you know, so a lot of the, I've been saying for the last year or so, like, our budget last year, we basically fought to maintain all the gains we've made over the last six years. If this continues and we receive a reduction from the state, there's no way for us to not be looking at what we can reduce, you know? And so, so it was powerful to be with a group of people all, you know, at the same, with the same goals. And so thanks for the invite, for that, too.
Yeah, of course. Okay, that is it for me. All right. So moving on to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Does any board member have anything they would like removed from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve 10.01 through 15.06?
It's moved.
Second.
Okay, second by Meredith. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm also in favor. Passes. How many do we have? One, two, three, four, five, six? Zero. Okay. And then can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
It's moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. I forgot to say comments or questions on the, eh, eh.